Yeah, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. The time of, well, the date is January 7th, 2021. The time is by past 6:00. We have everybody tonight?
Yep, full board.
We don't have to designate any alternate?
We do have a new alternate tonight. Mrs. Pearson is new on our board and welcome. Thank you for stepping up and jumping in.
Thank you.
And I guess we'll review the minutes from our November 19th meeting. You won't be the troublemaker that closes up doors?
That's what I'm saying.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as written?
Second.
Minutes approved. Oh, does everybody agree? We have Seth McCoy in his engineering. The engineer, come up to the two seats up front, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Tom Hammond, Seth McCoy.
I'm Seth.
Tom, I've got your pointer right there, too, if you need it.
Okay.
I think Gavin, I don't know if Dennis was involved or not. This is Atron here where you're coming up to Moose Pond. There was a gravel pit in this area that, this will be the third time the board's reviewed it. The first company disappeared, I think, that was going to do something. They've got all the approvals. We never got a bond from them and they disappeared. Was that 10 years ago, Tom, you think?
2016.
16, only four years ago? That was the second company.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think, we didn't do the first one.
Oh, I thought you did.
Yeah, so they go, Tony McChitek came in and did that subdivision. I'm not sure exactly when.
Yeah.
And then we worked when Goodstein had it.
Yeah, so the first company kind of disappeared. We could never get a bond on them. There was a lot of mistruths they were giving us, so they never really followed through. And they weren't the property owner. Then the property owner came in and was going to get the gravel extraction permit for this land here. They went through, got all the permitting. We never got the bond and he was killed, so that one didn't go through. Mr. McCoy is a local excavation contractor, so we're gonna try it again tonight. And it's fairly unique. We've already done the conditional use twice on it. I don't know if we actually, and it's up to the board, whether you guys want to do site walks and public hearings, or we just want to get it into the minutes that Mr. McCoy is in charge now. That is his property. Talk about the bond and we can look at the conditions that are on the plans as well, too. So, Tom, I'll let you take it for a little bit and tell them what you guys are gonna do, or Seth, who's ever speaking, and...
So maybe, do you have a copy of the plan you put out there?
Yes, it's coming. And do you guys all have the plan in your packet?
I do.
Yeah. The big thing of you guys will be all the notes on the sides for the conditions that were put on the last couple of times, hours of operations. Do you have many changes from the last time?
We have no changes.
Yeah.
The name on the plan.
Yeah.
So essentially, you know, what it is, it's a 37-acre parcel that will be an excavation permit. It is permitted, it will be permitted. We haven't renewed, I don't believe you have. We have not renewed with the DEP yet, but that is simple, a 10-day notice, and it'll be reviewed with the DEP. That allows a 10-acre open area at any time, along with your storage area, your storage processing area. And then it becomes a rolling excavation operation. You can only have 10 acres that aren't reclaimed in open excavation.
Seth, are you just using this for your personal company? Or are you gonna have scales and somebody there and run it like a pit business?
I want it for my own. I don't want to be willing to deny. I don't plan on having scales there, though.
Yeah. But you'd be selling to the public with hours of operation and stuff? Okay, so it's a regular pit, then?
Yeah. Because I definitely want to be able to sell to local contractors.
Are you gonna run a crusher and a screen in there?
Yeah, definitely a screen. The conditions on the crusher, I think it was two months they didn't want anybody crushing.
Yeah. I think it's exactly, I think it's on here, it's three months. Okay, when, in the summertime, when there are people at the pond. Okay, we had a condition that you did not crush during that time. So, you know, and Seth and I've had this discussion, there isn't that much crushing in there. This is not a real cobbly pit.
Basically, we'd be screening a lot and then we'd crush. We'd have a big pile, because there's not a lot of rocks in there. Not, there's a lot throughout, there's slopes.
No, I appreciate what the place is, but our last few gravel permits we've given for extraction, there was a commitment on the amount of time that people were gonna be crushing.
And this one does have that on here? If you take a look at your plan, it's, oh, I've gotta get down and find the exact. Operation notes, surety bond for 15,000. Town of Acton Fire Department have a lockbox. Plans with local state approvals provided on the site, which would be the DEP permit. Town of Acton letter compliance with the engineer shall be issued, okay, within a certain time. My glasses fall off.
I appreciate that.
I know, it's the mask of the glasses, we can't do both.
Okay. On here, there is a note on the hours, let's see. I know on here, there is a note regarding the hours or the times that crushing can occur.
Yeah, I know, hours of operation, crushing not allowed May through October.
Yeah, it's just a footnote under it.
Yeah. So essentially, that's an extended excavation operation, five feet to the water table. You'll have wells on the site that you can check that separation.
Does that include May and October? Or not allowed May through? So it's not May or October? June, July, August, September, four months.
Why you say that? It's not the way I read it.
That's why I was clarifying it, because I read it the other way and I'm like, that's six months he can't do it.
Right.
I haven't found it here. I had read it, now I don't see it.
Yeah, right under the hours of operation, above you the general notes.
Okay, okay, I was looking down the directory.
Yeah, how I read it was May, you're counting May through.
Through October.
Maybe not October, including May and not October is how I read it quickly.
I mean, we could change it.
Yeah.
Which, that was the problem, but like you said, there's not a lot of large rock in there, so.
So we couldn't crush during May and October?
Well, I was just looking at the wording of it.
This is just trying to clarify the meanings of what we do.
That's how it reads.
Yeah.
It reads May through October, it's the same as February.
So if we wanted to change that, we have to come back, or ask to change it?
I would change it, if you can get it changed now.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you'll have to stockpile.
So if we maybe, if you do that, because we definitely didn't crush.
Oh, he probably owns them.
June, July, August, September?
I would say maybe, yeah, Memorial Day to...
Yeah, there you go.
Memorial Day to Labor Day.
I think we've done that on some other ones, too.
I'd be totally fine with that. I'm fine with whatever, but I mean, I'd much prefer it on the extra month, spring, fall.
So then this changes June through August?
Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Yeah, I'm fine with Memorial Day and Labor Day. And I'm not even really sure, I mean, like I said, I don't think we're crushing very much anyway.
Yeah. And, I mean, the board's been doing that for 20-something years, because 20 years ago, the equipment was much louder. The newer stuff is so much quieter and it's all in, where you're an owner-occupied operator, you'll have a little bit of thought in as far as laying that machine out, so the exhaust is going especially, and build a berm. You build a berm behind that, you won't even hear it on the other side of the berm, but as it gets...
The thing is, it's actually pretty quiet.
Yeah.
The pressure is a little louder and I was looking at some different ways, because I wasn't sure how the neighbors would react.
Yeah.
It is a hole, too, so it might not be that bad, but you can just build like a
You build a berm around it?
A wall, exactly. Weight block wall, that actually quiets down the law.
Yeah. Do you own your crusher or you just lease that?
I just, actually just gonna, I don't even have one. I was just gonna pay somebody. I hadn't really thought that far, I mean, this, I really want it for the stand-in stone or false gravel, not, it'd be a bonus, but...
You'd probably only be renting it a couple of times a year at the most.
Yeah, yeah.
So you just pick those months that are convenient for you, that work with the best, with the late people.
I'd like to buy them, but I don't really know how much we're gonna need. And right now, you can pay somebody five bucks a ton. That's why, if we could do Memorial Day to Labor Day, I would do that.
Yeah.
The other thing that seems a little large for a smaller operation is 10 acres open.
Well, and this pit has kind of had some areas that need to be revegetated still, too.
Yeah. But I guess what we've done with the other ones, you know, it's been, we've kind of cut it, what, five?
No, they'll go 10. We've got one with 20, but once you get beyond that 10, it's bonding with the DEP. You're bonding at the state level, not the town level.
Those are bigger operations, so I'm thinking...
I mean, that's 14 acres there, as far, just so people can gather about what size is for there, but that Google map picture isn't totally accurate for that. A little off.
There's a lot more there, yeah.
I mean, I know the, the, the only thing that he could do in there really is improve the place. It is quite a mess in there, you know, that the last few people are left in there and not finished, but...
So if you look at, well, the overlay of the resource protection, this being the whole lot, this is all shoreline zoning and you're staying out of that area?
Oh, yeah. No, no, the plan has the 250 foot setback.
And then this is resource protection here, and these are also resource protection with buffers there. So when you look at their plan, it'll kind of show...
So if you, yeah, if you do take a look at the plans, you've got, you've got a 250-foot setback to all those significant wetlands and the pond.
Monitoring wells are all in, right?
That's correct. The well wells there, they will be moved as you move into the area.
Yeah.
DEP requires monitoring wells on every five acres.
So they're showing the 100-foot buffer where they'll stay away from the neighbor's property line, the new grading down through for sloping down into it. Wetland setbacks here where they'll stay out of the 250 zone. And and what's existing now. Some of the monitoring wells are shown there. As Dennis said, it was, it looked like the moonscape, I think, when the, before the first person got in there. He cleaned it up a lot and didn't do much reclaiming, I don't think. But there was a tremendous pile of reclaimed area, up in this area, a big stockpile of, I think...
There's a lot of loom right in there.
Yeah, yeah, I think there was, I don't know, a couple of thousand yards of it there, at least, back. I don't know if they've spread it out.
I wonder how much is there now?
There's a pretty good-sized pile of loom, right?
Like you drive in on the right?
See where it says office trailer? If you were driving in, it'd be on your right.
There's the office trailer there.
Yeah. So if you, if you were looking, driving in the driveway, it'd be on your right from that office trailer. Like, there's a couple tailing piles. I see it. It's like ready, I'm ready for this area.
Is this area all reclaimed now?
It's just stopped growing, I would have known.
Nothing you're gonna touch, it's basically done?
It's actually quite a bit higher than the bottom of pit right now.
Yeah.
So I, that's why I just really want to get operating and then...
Where it's open.
Yeah, and then after that, start figuring, you want to get my bearings set and I get everything organized. I do mostly commercial, I do a lot of commercial work. And everything commercial work, that is all about quality control.
Yeah.
So you gotta, you have to make sure your sand and everything has to be spensed. Everything has to be neat, or you might have one load of sales and it's not working.
The problem with this pit's always been its location. It's 15 minutes just to get to here and it's all uphill coming to trucking out of there. So owner-occupied, then you can justify the trucking time, especially the price of fuel now. I think when they originally did it, they went out the other way and onto the, they were doing the Spalding Turnpike with it.
So you're looking at 10 acres. But in reality, if things go well for you, you'll be moving around the piece.
That's good, there's about, there's 37 acres in there.
Yeah, so I'm saying you'll be moving around.
So what you do is just step, your little piece, reclaim it, keep on moving. Your storage area, your office trailer and stuff would be intended to stay in the same place.
Yeah.
So the stuff that's been supposedly, shall we say reclaimed, you'll probably go back in and take that down some more?
I, yeah, actually, I don't know if I really want this in the minutes yet, but I mean, this area here, I kind of plan on planting Christmas trees on either side, once we got it done with grading.
Yeah.
After, you know, put the loom and stuff in and just leave it up, just it up, and then maybe when I'm retired, I can sell Christmas trees. Because by then, they should be a hundred bucks a piece.
I mean, myself personally, I'm fine with everything with the conditions it was before, with the clarification on the date on, on crushing, myself personally.
No site walk, no conditional use hearing? Because we've done them twice already?
Yeah, I mean, it's really kind of old news.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I mean, it's a huge...
We are changing the conditions slightly, so we probably should have a hearing. I mean, personally...
I think you're clearing up an interpretation issue, that's why I asked. Because at first, I knew we were talking three, four months, we weren't talking six. And then when I read it, it's like, I could read it as being six as well, too. So that's why I wanted to come to the board, because it's a huge investment for him and I just want to get the plan in his name, the conditions in his name. He understands it, because he's going to be a, you know, a business in town for probably his life and his kid's life, anyway, so. So that would be up to the board. It's a gray area, I don't think, I've never heard of something where it's come through three times and several people have died and, you know, we've just never got the bond cleaned up on it, so.
And that would be a $10,000 bond, don't I?
I'd 15, is what they had said. We were doing $1,000 an acre 20 years ago and we've never changed it. And I think at $1,000 an acre, you could probably just buy your seed for it, never mind the loom and it down if we ever had to go and reclaim it ourselves.
Now, do you want a $50,000 check or do you want like a bond from my insurance company? Which are not a bond? Because I wasn't really sure on that. Because I know you guys said it was a balance check of 15 grand, or I got a copy of it from the realtor.
Yeah, yeah, on their bond or when they did it? We've had problems in the past chasing down lines of credit and having the bonds and things. I think the board has done it in the past, was just a, a check in an escrow account set up at the town.
Yeah.
Can that, can that simply go through the town manager, Ken? Rather than have to come, satisfy the town manager, satisfy the selectmen board that it's adequate surety? And then you could do something with a bond that way, rather than have it...
We haven't done that, have we?
No, as far as...
The method of...
The method of...
The method of bonding. Typically, the towns do that, that the planning board will say, yes, we want a bond, with a method that's acceptable to the town management?
Yeah, we haven't done that. We've been doing that ourselves.
Yeah, so, okay.
Myself personally, I'd like to see it just how Ken said.
Yeah, we should keep it consistent with the other operations that are...
And I agree with the increase, because we've been talking for a while that this isn't gonna do anything for us if somebody goes belly up, like this place has several times already.
Right.
Hopefully, it doesn't happen to you, but...
You don't plan on that, right?
Don't land on it.
Well, I hope, I hope the best for you, but... So I'd like to see it just how we've been doing it, in escrow account. I think that's the fairest way to be consistent with how we've been with everybody else.
The only other exception was one other company had bonded through the state.
Yeah.
Because it was 20 acres, that was, that was bigger than we could do.
Yeah.
The board have any other questions, or?
I guess I'm wondering if anyone else on the board thinks we should have a hearing or if we should waive the hearing, just because we've seen this site multiple times, it's similar use, almost identical.
And if anybody wanted to do a site walk, I don't know if people are, want to look at this kind of thing and it's not the best time of the year, but there's not a lot of snow right now.
I've been down there a bunch of times. I don't need to see a pit.
I think the big thing is just, I mean, the notes that have been put on in the past, there's no fuel being stored on site, so you eliminate that whole problem issue. He's limiting his truck trips to 50 per day. And if that becomes an issue, come, just ask the board to make changes, hours of operation.
And you have fuel on site, I assume?
What?
You have so few on site, so?
Well, it says no, but I was, so I was just gonna ask, I asked the guy, I went to DEP first. I didn't realize it's the town, the town was actually the harder one. I thought the DEP was gonna, they're basically like 250 bucks if you ever want.
You didn't know I was on this board, did you?
No, I didn't, I just didn't realize that, I figured the process would be harder convincing the state of located extract minerals than it was to handle that. So as far as the fuel goes, if you use a DEP-approved containment, are you guys okay with that? Like a roof over us, you know, from, I'm not seeing like 1,000 gallons, maybe like 300?
I'm fine with it, as long as it meets the...
I know the discussion in the past where, and it was mostly the owners didn't want it on site, because just somebody would go by hunting and put a hole through it and stuff like that, things we've seen. And some of these were over the Aquifer Protection District, so that was the concerns in the past. But I've seen, you know, half a septic tank with the tank inside of it and the roof on top of it. But most people just feel, insurance-wise or whatever, they just send a fuel truck come or they have the transfer tank in the back of their own trucks and fuel up, so.
Just put a pad under it, that's what we've done with all that, with all that, pretty much.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I just, I think it should be in...
Put a pad under it and he leaves, and then you don't have to worry about the stuff on site.
And the conditions, that's all. But that's just me.
Like I said, I really, I was, I'm just thinking, my loader takes 70 gallons. You can only haul 110, but hasn't that, and this reams, it'd take probably 100. So that brings you a chance of running out of it, pretty much, unless you have two trucks coming. That's why I was, but it's not, that's not that big of a deal, because I wasn't really sure about that.
But you want to get it clarified through this process, so that if you decided to put a tank in there and it wasn't allowed, somebody could say, you're having gallons, you're in violation.
I don't think there's too many pits that do store fuel on site now.
Most of them don't want the headache.
I don't think any of them have, seen in the last 10 years.
Yeah. But I understand what he's saying. You know, the loader takes X amount, the excavator takes so much and and more than likely, you might even have a yard truck there.
That is Aquifer Protection, I think?
That is.
I think so.
When we were up there, that, when you drive in the road, there's a couple of low areas where you can see the ponds right on the map, where you drive right through that, and it's pretty much groundwater.
Yeah.
It's superficial there.
I just drove through there, I don't know, a month ago, I guess, coming from, up on the man road, so.
Now, a little bit different, same topic. They, I'm not opposed to any of the four-wheel clubs, snowmobile clubs, hiking clubs, because I actually think they would do a better job of policing it. Are there clubs in Acton?
They, they don't have a snowmobile club, Shapley does.
They groom acting trails, the Shapley...
Because I mean, there's a lot of people that go through that, that's what I was just wondering. Because I definitely don't want anything destroyed.
I know there's the snowmobile bridges we saw on the site walk out by the Hanson Pond area across the street from you. As you know, there must be a path that goes through Yars and comes out the other side to get to Great East Forum.
There's a pad catch in the jewelry?
Yeah, if it, something happens to the tank, or like different pads or...
The tank, so the DEP's rule is the tank has to be 10% more than the, the containment has to be 10% more than the tank. So if you have a septic tank, 500 gallon septic tank, or I would use a 1,500 gallon, because the bottom's a little bigger, but if you use a 1,500 gallon, bigger bottom, you can fill 500 gallon tank, it's a rule with top anyway. And they can't have, can't be enclosed, it has to be open, so if there's a fire, the fire car will put it back. And I don't even, I just didn't want to be looking to knock you, I really don't want to go that, because it's a couple of grand and you gotta worry about people who pull those messes away, that's the only...
I think that's why most people in the past didn't, it was just easy to do the transfer, or the bigger operations have the fuel trucks come and deliver a couple of times a week.
So what is your request gonna be, Seth?
What, what?
What's your request gonna be? Are you gonna ask to keep fuel on site and...
I, yeah, if I could, I'd like to, if this was the time to ask. As long as it was meeting a DEP containment, huh, we'll see. And that's about as strict as it gets.
There's one guy for the whole state for gravel pits?
I'm at the rules.
Yeah, I know. You can have all the rules you want, but if you got one guy for the whole state...
You put a liner underneath the concrete, some kind of a, I don't know what it'd be, pad underneath the concrete.
Yeah, sort of asking if there's something catching.
You know, I mean, because that stuff will, will through the concrete, I mean, it isn't gonna...
There's a design that the DEP's going to want, and I know when we were looking at this, when Turks originally did that, when you did that one, the state didn't like the design on it. There was a pipe involved or something, they didn't want subsurface there, they wanted to, I think this bill to be contained on the pad, and then you've got your speedy drying, all that recovery stuff right on that, probably kept right in the building itself.
What I was thinking of doing, because the office trailer's obviously garbage, but I planned with a split shift container, somewhere close to the fuel, keep, you know, pads and all that stuff right inside.
All the MSHA signage and all the equipment you need for that?
I mean, I don't see no harm in it, as long as it's DEP-approved.
I'd say if the board's considering it, then add it to the plan for where the refueling area would be, with the design as sketch of the compliance for how you're gonna do it.
With DEP approval?
Yeah, just, yeah. On DEP's website, they have a very specific way they want fuel stored on site.
I guess that, that's where I was going, you know, I didn't know exactly what it would be, but I'm sure they have.
So we could just add like up to 300 gallons or something, or up to 500 gallons? I would never put one 500 in, I can tell you that, but be more worried about somebody coming in. Because it's still gonna be 12 a ton. Because you've got a grinder and a four-wheeler, you can pretty easily steal a bunch, so I would not have a lot there.
Right.
You could, you could even put the note on that it'll be DEP-compliant.
What?
It could be DEP-compliant with fueling station.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's what I was getting at. That's why you're a professional, I'm just one of the guys.
Find that mask.
What was the rationale for saying no fuel on site in your previous...
What was the rationale for, for saying no fuel on site in your previous application? Was that just because they didn't want to put it, put it on?
That was a lot of it right there, but uh, this dotted area is, is um, aquifer protection zone. And when you're removing that um, restrictive layer from the top, the loom, and you've got that open coarse gravelly stuff, fuel and diesel's much better to, to clean up if you had to than gasoline. It travels down through there and most times it's unprotected. There's nobody there. And years ago, there was vandalism, people shooting him and things like that. The tanks have gotten a lot better as far as the methods to contain the stuff. And most people didn't want the liability or the theft. So that was just something they said to eliminate the question whatsoever. So no fuel and then the board just moved on.
And the, the level they're gonna maintain, if I remember right, up there you guys said was five feet.
That's correct.
Five feet above the water table.
Above the high water table.
So that's what you're gonna take everything down to. Then there's only gonna be five feet between there and the water.
And honestly, I really have no intention to store fuel. I just, if it came down to it, I'd like to be able to. Because I don't know if you guys have ever seen like an actual tank that you're supposed to have with the proper vents.
Yeah.
You really can just put the vent up and stick a sight post and pretty much clean somebody out.
Oh, yeah. With a portable truck.
Six inch hole, yeah.
With a portable pump in the back of your truck and there goes.
Yeah.
And $5 a gallon, it's much more concerning versus $2 a gallon.
Dollars, yes.
I just don't want you to have to come back for anything.
But we could, it would be easy to add it. I'd like the option as long as the DEP, because I, like I said, I don't really plan on it, but I, I don't want to be limited not to here.
But I'm only one opinion.
Well, if it's DEP approved and uh, on the previous, the deck, whatever that is, I don't have objections. The uh, it's the second change in the plan that has to be made to put that.
That might work.
Whatever those specific requirements, the right words and.
Okay.
Right.
Are these the minutes from the opening, Joe? Yeah, from seven, 17.
That was the second time.
Right. So there's nothing about fuel in here.
There's probably already on the plan. We didn't have to discuss it. Anybody on the board have a concern with the fuel there?
Did you hear what John said?
No. I heard him talking about the DEP and then I got sidetracked. A butterfly went by, caught my attention. What was that, John?
I just said that the plan has to change to, you know, put in the right, instead of saying no fuel, it has to put in the right words.
Yeah, and they gotta change the date anyways. So usually you guys could have a vote of conditional approval and then they could come back at the next meeting with the plans and sign off on that.
I think we usually wait to see the final plan.
Usually when it's a complicated plan, but this one here, I mean, you got conditional vote, just so.
Sure, just simple, simple changes.
Yeah. I mean, it's no grade planes and vegetation schemes or anything like that. There's nothing dramatically gonna change. And it's a moving operation. At any time, he'll have five acres, 10 acres open plus the roads and storage areas usually. So um, you could get up to 12, 13 acres of open up there. Then hopefully at the end of the day, there's a game plan. Once it becomes countered as it is to a generally flat area with some slopes, then 30, 40 years from now, it'll be something else.
It'll be Christmas tree time.
Christmas tree.
Yeah, allegedly, yeah. Any thoughts of doing house lots on the pond or anything? Nothing at all?
Actually, uh, I was gonna talk, so if I want to put a camper there for myself, is that against the rules?
A camper? Um, there's an AV permit you'd need.
So if I can do it, then that's, I pretty much am looking at that I have a quiet spot that nobody can bug me.
Yeah.
No motors.
Yeah.
With no cell phone reception, limited cell phone and no internet right there. And it's only 20 minutes from my house.
Yeah, yeah. You'd need a septic hookup. Just throw a septic in and then tie it in and is there water on site? You got a well on site?
No, there's not even, yeah, there's no power.
Yeah.
There's water though.
It is. Like I went up there, we took the kids fishing up there like 20 times. Like there's no boat, so it's quiet. The water's crystal clear. I don't have any intention of selling any of the Moose Pond frontage separate at all.
I was talking to a guy with a beautiful camp on Great East, beautiful, and they're packing up an aluminum boat and going fishing. I'm like, where are you going? He's like, we go to Moose Pond. We love fishing there. I'm like, you got the place on Great East and that? And they go to Moose Pond.
Catch and fish pretty much every cast. It's crazy. Buy it.
It's a big bass on there.
I just left the secret up there. Can you tell us?
Way to go.
So yeah, that's allowed. That's pretty much what I plan on doing. Behind that or that reclaim pile is this pretty flat little trail.
Yeah. I don't have any issues with it. You guys are good without a, a hearing and site walk and stuff. Um, the board's been out there a couple of times, so.
Just one other question. The hours were approved in the previous one? That was part of the previous approval?
I think so.
These hours, six to five and Saturday, seven to 12?
Yeah.
I have seven to two on Saturday on the original one.
Did the hours change on this new plan?
No, I don't believe so. Let me just flip it over.
I think it's six to five, but you can't do it.
I don't think, I don't think I changed anything on it. 6:00 PM to 5:00 PM on the old one. 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Maintenance and loading is 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Excavation is 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturdays, 7 to 12. That's the approved one, the one that's recorded. And the same thing on this one.
I do have a concern with the Saturdays.
I have.
Not operating in the.
In what?
Not, not your operating class, but trucking.
Yeah.
Um, one of the biggest problems, if it is one of the biggest problems, over the years, there've been a lot of complaints, uh, is the gravel trucks. And this is a summer town, you know, a lot of, they're really vacation town. And the trucking on the Saturdays with all the added traffic and stuff, I guess is what I would have a problem with.
That's the line at the dump.
That's where I thought he was going was the.
Yeah, and the transfer station. I mean, we have lines out in the road at the transfer station several times during the summer. And it just.
I do not have any intention of having it open on Saturdays. I would like to be able to go in there in case I fall behind because we go to a bunch of rain or something.
To do some work.
I've got 30 employees.
Yeah.
Five kids. I work basically from three in the morning to about seven o'clock every single day.
Yeah.
Saturdays is when I fix stuff. I don't do, all my work through the same deal. I tell everybody everything done during the week and we'll take weekends off. I find it much better to not work weekends.
I would like to see that in the condition. There's no, no trucks on Saturdays.
Allow them to do maintenance work, land, any of the work on site, just no trucking out of there on Saturday?
Right.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
I think the town people feel a lot better about it.
So up to three changes, Tom.
Okay. So it's simply gonna be Saturdays, 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM maintenance?
Now you say, well, let me clarify a little bit. Now you say trucking. Am I allowed to bring a little bit, bring a machine in or out? Like you're just saying like haul and gravel.
Or if he's trying to, well, having, he said though, if he's trying to catch up because of rain days or something like that.
Well, the equipment more likely would be in there.
Right, but I'm saying hauling stuff out. That's what you mean too, right?
I mean, I was kinda hoping if, I will, if there was, if we had two weeks of rain and we could work on Saturday, which it doesn't happen very often, I would like the option to do it, but I do not have any intention of raining Saturdays.
Yeah.
I don't think you guys would be disappointed on how I operate. I'm pretty.
I just like to see the condition of no trucking gravel on.
Memorial Day to Labor Day?
Yeah. I'd even be willing to go along with that.
Yeah.
No trucking material. I mean, obviously if you gotta go pick something up or whatever's one thing, but no material going down the road.
So is that the same as the question? If no materials, but materials can go on the rest of the year?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Okay.
So it's gonna be Memorial Day to Labor Day? Yeah, I'll tell you that.
I really am done this time.
I lost count now. How many changes?
I don't know. One, two.
You keeping track?
Kinda, yeah.
Well, it's hard because you try to think of everything that might be whatever. Remember all the concerns from the past.
Mm hmm.
So does the application have to change to reflect those hours? Currently it's um.
I think the big thing's the plan. The plan's gonna be what's recorded.
Typically you won't go back to the application. Okay, you go to the plan, the plan gets recorded and that's what the conditions are.
I'm fine with it.
I mean, it's been beat to death twice prior to, so it's just tweaking it for this owner and that's why it's suggested coming to the board. So you can get what you want, what you need. It's a huge investment, I'm assuming. It's a, how many acres total?
700, 10, right?
Yeah.
I can't remember if it's 210 or 190. Those lots get cut out of it. 37 is the pit.
Did Midway open that up originally?
Yeah.
I, I can't remember. I couldn't believe how much history there was in this little piece of property, actually.
It was Midway originally.
Yeah.
He said it was a long time ago.
Mid, yeah, Midway International Acrofids, one pit.
A lot of it went down to Portsmouth. They hauled it all too.
Yeah.
What do you have for changes?
Uh, from what I can remember, he wants to store 300 gallons of fuel according to the DEP regulations. Uh, no trucking from Memorial Day weekend to Labor Day weekend on the Sat, on weekends, Saturdays.
Yeah.
Uh, no crushing, same rule. Um, am I missing one?
So the fuel's limited to 300 or we say?
Well, that's what you said, you stated.
I'm just giving you an example. I don't even know if you can get a 300 gallon tank.
275 is what I've got.
What is that?
275 is what I have.
Like an oil tank or?
Yeah.
So what, what would happen if we simply said it was in compliance with DEP regulations? Fuel storage would be in compliance with the DEP regulations?
Yeah, I would like that. Cause I was thinking five, cause 70 tanks, 750 gallons. So, or 1500 gallon tank, 750, and then you 500 gallon tank.
I would, I would say not to exceed 500 gallons.
Yeah.
Right.
And I guess that I really, I am in my mind. I really have to see how the fuel goes, but I really don't think I'm even gonna do it because I'm kinda going both ways of it.
It's not much cheaper to have it delivered, although you may have a better source than I do.
And the possibility of this camper with added septic tank.
It would just be permitting later. We wouldn't need that as a condition.
So I think I got them all, right?
Um, you got the Memorial Day to Labor Day change.
Yeah, for both of them.
Crushing, trucking.
And the Saturday piece.
And fuel.
I think that's all the changes.
Call for a vote has changed on the conditional.
Do you want to, can we call?
Approval and then you guys can bring another plan in at the next meeting.
Yep. The next month, next week?
Uh, first and third Thursday.
Good start.
Well, this is the first one, so I've got.
All right, can we have a approval of the conditional use changes with, for Seth McCollough?
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the um, permit with the condition changes that the chairman read aloud.
Any second.
I'll second it. Do we want to note those changes specifically for the motion?
Uh, yeah, I have most of mine believed, so. Just the two late Memorial Day weekend, to Labor Day weekend, fuel storage.
DEP approved, not to exceed 500 gallons.
Gallons.
And those are the four, I believe.
Right.
Motion made.
Yeah.
Motion made. We gotta set you seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. Can we call for a vote? All in favor? All opposed?
Unanimous, 5-0. Um, you guys just bring the plan in next time and we'll put you on the agenda and get you in and out.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth. Welcome to town.
Have a good night, guys.
Okay. We have the Wilson Lake Trust, 93 Went Ren Road, map 136, lot 005, front of the table.
Tyler Matthews from Lake Lemon Consultant is representing the trust. Which one you doing first, Ren Road?
Yeah. Oh, that's all right. Same thing.
This is a Cindy Wicks one, Greg?
Yes, Cindy Wicks. Looks like it's a demo, existing, demo existing house and build a new home with a level 30% expansion allowance. For best practical location.
Yeah, it's non-conforming on the roadside, waterside, looking to tear down, rebuild, keep my same setbacks I have right here and building that building envelope.
That's the house from the roadside there. That was a semi screen, didn't match. So that's the lake upside there. It's 36 feet away right now to this closest point. He's okay on the side. They're a little tight here, but I think that just goes to the steps, right?
Yep.
So you'll be able to get the 50 feet from the center of the right away?
Yeah.
Have we been up there, Ken?
No. Gavin has.
Can we go back to that again to show where the road is?
Um, road's right here. So that's that point that's 49 feet to that, 49.5 to that step there. And when they reconstructed, it would be 50.
That, that, that's from the road?
Correct. Yeah. So there's no real room to move this thing back.
That's how far from the lake?
I'm coming.
36.
36 and a half to the deck. What year was the structure built?
Uh, I'm not sure. Cause it's hopefully going in a dumpster. I don't have the mother folder with me.
So why wouldn't, wanna move it closer to the other way from the lake?
It's 50 feet, it meets, it's already against the setback from the road. So there's no more room to move it back.
You'd shift it, shifting it over?
I was looking at that earlier. If it came over this way a little bit, you'd gain this number, but you're probably gonna get tighter on this thing here.
The septic's over to that side too.
Yeah, it was over in this area. So once, and it's hard for the builder and the homeowner because they need to know kind of the box they're in to design the house to it versus if they designed the house and the planning board makes changes to them, then they've kinda gone backwards a little bit.
You're not gonna have to uh, improve the septic, that's fine. You're not gonna have to, uh, improve the septic, that's fine.
Um, the house was a major renovation in the nineties and so the septic was, yeah.
Yeah, septic's signed off in oh-one and state certified.
How many bedrooms was that?
Whatever the new house is gonna be. Two bedrooms, it says. August of oh-one.
And a new place would be two bedroom? With a new place would be two bedrooms also?
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't know what year it was built?
Uh, it's had so many additions on it, I know there was a lot done in the nineties to it.
Well, that's what I'm, I feel like, it looks like a very new structure. I'm wondering if it may have already had its thirty percent expansion.
Yeah, when we go to do the, the calcs on that, Tyler's does a tremendous lot in town. He'll grab the card from nineteen eighty-nine. And this was an addition over here. It's, it's got its thirty percent, so he'll calculate the square footage and volume and use that in the design from it. This was an addition in the nineties that was done, and I think there's a dormer on the other side of this that was done.
Yep. Yeah, there's no real thirty percent expansion allowed on that, but it's still looking to tear down and rebuild, because all those additions put on there, it's just kinda not put together well.
Gavin helped.
Shh. Not put together like I...
Gavin didn't do that, huh? Yeah, so that was the last one she did, was on there.
So you're looking at the same square footage?
Mm-hmm.
The same foundation?
Same footprint?
Yeah, it's got, well, it's got like three sewer pumps in one of the sections of the crawl space, so it's a wet area. That's kinda the main concern for starting over.
And all those magazines down there, you gotta get rid of those.
I haven't, is there a bunch?
You're hiding stuff down there.
I get the joke, Gavin, if that helps.
Been in the basement?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to be in the basement to know, but maybe if we moved the deck over to the right, we would reduce the thirty-six and a half feet.
I think you're gonna get closer.
Or if we reduce the deck size or reconfigured it on a different part of the building, we could, you know, get you further from the lake.
So side setback won't be an issue, road setback won't be an issue, that's the only one right there.
Because it kinda looks like maybe the, if the deck was ten feet to the right, it wouldn't be quite as close to the water, but, you know, it's a minimal amount, I don't know. But if you're redesigning the whole thing, then...
Yeah, if you centered it, you'd probably gain a little bit.
Kinda where that jaw is.
Yeah.
You had no issue if they, you had to do that, uh, there's no reason why, if you had to move that ten feet, the deck?
Yeah, but, I mean, there's no saying that that's, is that gonna be a hundred percent closer? I'm not positive on it.
To me, it would be hard to word it in your conditions, is the only thing I'm thinking.
Well, we could just, you know, say no closer than thirty-eight and a half feet or something, you know what I mean? And then they could configure the deck however they want, but assuming that it would be reduced from the, using the deck to gain the two feet or whatever.
Seems like there's, there's about five feet, just scaling roughly, that you can slide this over and then you're gonna be at the thirty-six and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see you really gonna accomplish anything. I understand where you're going, but, I mean, we can slide this over, you're gonna end up with that number right there and you're gonna make that number bigger.
Did you just do that, calculate that?
Yeah. Roughly. I didn't have a scale ruler with me, though.
I'm sure there's some way we could configure it to gain a couple feet so that it's conformal to what we like to do.
So like you say, call it thirty-eight?
Yeah, something like, yeah, just so we're gaining something and...
Does that work with you?
Thirty-eight even?
I mean, you could inverse your L so that you were, your right-hand part of the L was closer to the road and slide your deck into the nook there. You know, I'm sure there's some way you could...
I'm okay with thirty-eight even.
It'd be nice to, we like to gain something on these things, especially when the whole, the foundation's coming out and everything.
Thirty-eight even, we move back a little and I can work with that, I guess.
Because he's also moving ahead that half a foot to pick up this area here too, so... As long as you're within that, that works.
It's not like it's going very far.
No.
Yeah.
Like you say, you gain two foot there and a half a foot there.
Thirty-eight even then?
No closer than thirty-eight, yeah.
Meet all setbacks and the waterfront setback would be thirty-eight? Was that a motion, Dennis?
Yes. I, I, well, first, yeah.
Unless there's anything else, anyone else has a...
I don't wanna cut people off.
I'm good with thirty-eight feet.
Yeah, there's not a lot of room with most of these tonight, there's not a lot of room to gain it much.
I'll give you a second.
There's only four foot wall right now.
That'd be its foundation. Word if Dennis made the motion.
I haven't been in there. She says she can crawl around in there, so I'm guessing it's something like a...
So where are you gonna put it?
Were you in there? Were you in the crawl space?
Probably the same thing.
I didn't go in it, I looked at it.
A lot of things with water issues now, so it may just be a slab on great...
It's kind of got different aspects of the foundation.
Not sharing different areas.
Looks like it's block, is it block? Is it a block foundation now?
Is that a block foundation or poured?
The picture looks like it.
I think it's a combination of everything.
Looks like block, looks like block.
I know the new stuff poured, but...
Yeah.
On that one side, it looks like blocks, I don't know.
Yeah, it's probably a block.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the best practical location for tax map one thirty-six, lot oh-five. With, um, none of the construction to be any closer than thirty-eight feet from the water.
And meet setback on all other sides?
And meet all the setbacks on the other sides.
Give me a second.
One second.
All in favor?
Zero. Yeah.
All right.
Before we go on, Chris, I'm asking this.
Okay.
Do we need to, with this part on the form, Ken, do we need to do this, all this here at the meeting? On the application?
For, those are more findings of fact that we put into it. And most of it is reasons we didn't move back. This one's clear, because the road's right there.
Yeah.
I'll blame Tyler for the other one that was, we did your first site walk on that was kinda, had four hundred feet behind it to go, but it dipped down, it was on that peninsula or on Great East Lake. That was another one of Tyler's projects. That one there, you wanna be more specific and fill out why you didn't wanna move it back, because it had hundreds of feet you could've gone back, but you would've moved them down, onto the hill and back up behind the power lines, and you'd just justify kinda, because we do have other residents that come in and say, "I had, I had to move my house back, why isn't theirs moved back?" And you'd be like, "Because the road's right there," you know, so...
My concern about this was, honestly was, uh, with Christina. Where she's the one that does all the paperwork.
She fills that out and then gets together with Chris and gets Chris to sign them.
And gets Chris to sign them?
Yeah.
I mean, so she doesn't have to figure all this stuff up on her own, is what I'm saying.
Most of it's in the minutes, and in the discussion, we kinda discussed why it wasn't moving back.
Okay, so the chair will, will prepare to get these things filled out?
Just like Ray Darrell O'Reilly.
All right. Just wanted some clarification on that. Thank you.
I'll set the, move on.
I've moved on.
All right. David Lewis, one twenty-seven Eagle Road, map one thirty-five, lot zero zero eight, best practical location. The property owner is applying to lift the existing camp and set on a full foundation with an addition with a allowable thirty percent expansion allowance.
I've got dial up the internet, yeah.
Slow.
Now, I really wish it upgraded the wifi here a little bit.
At this time of night, it kinda makes everything go slow.
This one here, this is the existing house here, and it's actually four inches over onto the neighbor's side, comes out, goes down. Uh, the yellow is what they proposed to how to relocate this. The problem with this is, there's a stream here. I'll pull it up when I get the other maps up and running. So this stream setback, it's not on our maps, it's a protected stream. So it, more likely is a tributary stream that's got a seventy-five foot setback to it, and currently... Is it nineteen now, Tyler?
No, it's sixteen point nine.
So it's sixteen now and you'd make that nineteen, so we gain a little bit by the stream. Uh, we're gonna get it off the neighbor's property and get it so it meets five feet all the way down this side here. This is the hundred foot setback here. This blue that angles out and this purple is the fifty feet from the road. So it looks like there's some area here, they've got the septic tank right behind it, and I think as we move back, did the stream get closer?
Uh, farther away, the back corner.
Yeah, the deck's the closest point to the stream there. Goes from seventeen to twenty-nine.
There it goes.
Kinda looks like the addition's going where the, the house could be shifted to. Is it new, we're talking new foundation under this thing, or?
Yeah. It's just sitting on the piers right now.
Yeah.
So that's from the waterfront side, and then, and these are typical lots we see all over town, the fifty by a hundred, and they really weren't designed for the amount of, uh, use that they, they get now.
So this is a thirty percent expansion under that?
Yeah. Yeah, so the, the board's focus is to relocate the existing camp, and then, once you give them the parameters, then if they can do an addition, they get to do an addition, or they get to go up, or, or whatever luck they get. And that's what's hard with these regulations. What this guy can do, this guy next door may not be able to. The guy be, may, next door may be able to keep it where it is, and this guy may have to move it back forty feet. So it's, it's site-specific, even though it's all the same rules and regulations. I think that's the boundary, is that stream right there that comes all the way down through. That's the house and the deck right there, and it's...
So the walkout, Tyler, is gonna be on the lakeside, I assume?
The wa, the walkout?
Yeah.
I don't think there'll be a walkout. It's just gonna be a foundation, so it's on something solid, but I don't have the, the grade to do a walkout there.
The maximum you can elevate these camps are only three feet. The state holds you to just be able to, that's the most you can do it, to original grade. So, I know one we did a little while...
Sure. We did one up Great East, up on...
Yeah, and then there was one a little while ago, we just did on West Shore Drive. That, with the bank in behind it, as they moved in, they were able to, and they got a walkout out of it, though.
That's pretty flat up there, though.
Just here?
Yeah, proper yob, that's pretty flat up through the...
Yeah, there's some, I could see possibly, I don't know where the water table is there, especially that stream coming in, but I could see maybe, uh, three-foot windows in the basement, you know what I mean? So you had some light in there, but hard telling without digging.
So you'll be building a new deck and?
Um...
You're gonna raise that up with the house?
Ideally, I think, it might have to be, you may have to detach it, but probably keep the same deck if possible and just reattach it. Unless it can all be moved.
Well, myself personally, I'm fine with the plan, but that's just me.
So there isn't too much being changed with the house itself? It's just being lifted and the foundation put under and then an addition put on? Or how much is being done to the, the existing structure?
The plan right now is really nothing to the existing structure, other than a full foundation under it and an addition off the back. He's now moved here year-round, so just to have a little bit more room. That's about it.
I'm gonna tell everybody here that's on this board, if anybody who don't know it, I have a tendency to talk, and it doesn't mean that I think I know everything, it's just how I am, so everybody else really needs to, um...
I've explained to them all that this is a night out for you, and this is, this is exciting, this is exciting.
This is really good, this is really good. I can talk, say whatever I want. But I, I, I don't want people to think I'm trying to control whatever. Everybody's opinion is very valuable on this board.
I kept the heat down cool, so you'd be moving tonight.
I'm glad. But everybody else is glad. I'm all set with it. I don't know if anybody else is.
I think that looks like there's room to gain a few feet, like we tried to do. Whether it's moving the house back slightly into the, where the addition is, or just changing the structure of the deck in the front to get us more than seventeen point four feet from the lake. You know, I'm sure we can gain a little bit.
Uh, this is, this one's even tighter than the other one, in my opinion, but, um, if... Yeah, I got the whole chamber system tank, everything.
What's in between the whole chamber?
Uh, the straight one, I would say is the road. Pink, I would say is the pump.
Always pumping from here to there.
Yeah.
I mean, you still have between your, back of your proposed addition and the fifty feet from the road, you still look like you still have, uh...
Only got twenty feet to the chamber system.
And how close can we get to the chamber system?
Twenty feet.
Pretty much it, and there's a septic tank there too, Gavin.
Which is normally ten.
I'm okay with all that eighteen even.
Look at the front of the structure then.
What's that?
I mean, you should look at the lakeside of the structure where it's close to the stream and reconfigure the deck area a little bit, since you're lifting the whole structure, the deck's probably gonna be compromised and I'm sure we can gain a little bit somewhere.
We talked about, even if you angled the forty-five degree when they go to reconstruct or something, that would change the numbers dramatically, but in reality, I mean, you don't, you don't change much.
Only looks like you'd lose like two feet off the deck doing a forty-five.
How about that ramp, Tyler?
Yeah, the paved walkways.
Doing away with the ramp.
Is it the paved walkways that we're talking about? Is that the paved walkways that we're talking about?
Well, the ramp won't help the setback from the water though.
It'll help with the overall conditions of the site, which is something we look at when we're relocating these things. Just to reduce the impervious on the site to help with runoff.
It would from the tributary stream.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Just throwing that out there, whatever anybody else wants.
Lose some of the pavement?
Well, it looks like with their proposed addition, we're gonna be losing some of the pavement anyway. That doesn't look like they really showed a reconfigured walkway. I don't know if it's gonna stand-
As a Y?
As a Y, or maybe we could uh, you know, reduce impervious that way somehow. And there's also this piece on the left that's kind of just residual that it's hard to know if the, if that's gonna be reinstated as a walkway around the addition, or if that's gonna disappear or-
Yeah, just just one walkway from the driveway to the house, no, no Y, but-
And the um, on the stream side, this small triangular area, is that gonna disappear, you think, or?
That that's part of the old walkway?
Yeah.
Um-
He'll have lot coverage to deal with too as well.
I thought, I didn't get into how I was gonna landscape it, I'm just trying to get a building setback first. Um, there's gonna be a lot less pavement, obviously, this, for what we're doing.
What is your impervious coverage right now?
Um, over 20%.
Are you gonna get down to 20% in this?
Uh, probably won't get down to 20, but I'll be less than I am now.
Well, what's your proposed reduction?
100. Um, I don't know quite where, I'm at just under 30 right now.
Well, it'd be nice to, maybe if you don't want to change the footprint of the proposed house, we could somehow reduce the impervious of the site, get closer to that 20%.
We call it 25%. And I am putting an addition on there too, so it's, it's a small lot, I mean.
Well, I don't know what the existing is. You said close to 30, but-
How about the shed?
29.766.
Okay.
How about the shed Tyler?
Um, no real plans for that.
Can you move that?
I don't want to.
Good answer. Hold your ground.
I I pre- I appreciate that. Everybody that comes to us don't wanna come to us.
I'll move that, if I can put that into the addition, then I'll be further away from the river and it'll-
Put that square footage, you mean?
Yeah. Do that in a heartbeat.
Sure.
It's because somebody told him he couldn't.
That's not true.
I think the compromise would be um to remove that shed and remove that ramp. To get us closer down for the-
We put in the ordinance a few years ago that if you couldn't find, the zoning didn't allow you to have a shed, that as long as you met the road setback and side setback, we'd allow you to put a shed so you didn't get any closer to the water. And and that was through state legislation that we were able to get that pushed through because these people need to be able to store gas and types of things that we don't want them storing in the house, so.
How about moving the shed?
Yeah, in general, of course, they like to also um achieve better results every time, but what do we at now?
Around 30.
29.7, which for a small lot, that's really not that bad.
But you could move the shed.
Right, we could get it also-
Away from the seasonal br- stream.
Or put it behind the 100 too.
Put it behind where?
The 100-foot line, which is the um, I think it's either the pink or the orange line.
The straight line, the straight line's the road, because the road's straight, the jagged is that.
Purple on the-
So the road setback overlaps the 100-foot.
So we wouldn't want to-
Non-conforming both ways.
No matter what you did to that, you're gonna make it more non-conforming. He would like to move it closer and put it into the house, and that was a no too. So, I'd leave the shed alone, because really, if you're moving it over here, this is their driveway, this is their area, this is the use. And I didn't look at the shed to see if it was legally constructed or anything, or permits, because we weren't, we didn't have any of that in the discussion, so. I mean, obviously, he's on the neighbor's property over here, so sliding it over, everyone's gonna agree to that. It's just is there room to come back a little, and the addition really shouldn't weigh into that as much. It's the chamber system, 20 feet off, and you can get in the tank into that.
What's the dimensions on that shed Ken?
12 by 12, 12 by 14 maybe, just looking at that side setback from the river stream is 11.4.
I mean, we've had people in the past uh do things like that. They either reduce the size of it, I mean, that shed's pretty big. That isn't uh-
But they're not doing anything with the shed?
I I appreciate that, but with the lot coverage, we've had people remove other buildings, so they-
Well, they could choose, they could choose what they wanted to do to reduce the lot coverage, if we just came up with a a number for lot coverage and then they could-
Yeah, there's a lot of pavement there that doesn't need to be there.
They can, they can choose how they accomplish that themselves.
They can choose it?
Yeah, if they want to take pavement out, if they want to take roofing out, you know.
So you, what you're saying, you just set the number and they figure out how to accomplish that number?
Yeah, if they're 29.7 now, we set the new number.
All right.
You know, we like 20, you know, 20's our maximum in the zoning ordinance, so we try to achieve that, just like a side setback, we try to achieve it.
I understand what you, I understand what you're saying too about that, and I agree with what Ken's saying. I I just going by what we've talked about, but I guess, like you said, it's, our place has set the standard. And it's up to them to figure out how to accomplish it.
When they go to do that addition, they're gonna have to revegetate that size of the addition, but in this case here, they're getting rid of the deck and this is pretty much all non-vegetated anyways. Behind it.
But that whole, that whole area that's that's called addition in the second sheet is an area that the existing house could be moved into.
So we, we-
If we want to gain some feet from the lake.
This is one where we would uh require a vegetation plan, revegetation-
I think that'll be a good idea, since it's, has so much impervious surface.
I, but don't you have to have a revegetation plan every building permit? I know I have to do one, so.
Yeah, but you're special. You're gonna show them, probably you're right.
Yeah.
Tyler, I guess, I just-
They're usually planning board conditions.
What's that?
It's usually a planning board-
I mean, it's not much, but-
And if you forget it, I don't tell it.
That lake number up to 18 feet, I mean, it's it's not much, but we're pushing back, we're I don't know if that makes you feel any better, but it's just, it's so tight, it's, there's not much I can do with the lot anyway, I don't really want to give anything up, that's the problem.
Right, well it's hard too, because you're not the owner, um, but I do feel like, because obviously that, where you're putting the addition, the house could be slid into that area. There is, you know, there's, there is some room to move. But um, I guess I don't know if we wanna, you know, go for the 25% impervious instead of the 30.
I I'm willing to do the 25% impervious and get down to that. I can't get to 20 with just how tiny the lot is, but I, 25 works, yeah.
That seems like a good condition to me.
It's basically 5% down, so.
Yeah.
Normally Tyler, when we do these conditions, I just, the reason why I brought it up was because the revegetation is usually in the
Yeah.
Paperwork, so that-
Yeah.
Part of the minutes, for the record or whatever.
Obviously, it's much more sensitive 18 feet away from the lake versus 85.
Right.
90. Flat lot versus steep lot. Were you making a motion? Is that what you were thinking?
Yeah. What John wants to do.
You'll screw up the minutes.
I make a motion. That we approve the best practical location permit for David Lewis. Map 135, lot 008. With the conditions of uh approval, revegetation plan, and no more lot coverage than 25%.
Side setback's gonna be five feet?
Yeah, because that is a little different.
Yeah.
Gonna round up to 17.4 to 18?
Oh, I gave you the 25 already, now I can't give you that too.
And that's a motion.
Uh, you want to get the stream setback in there too?
Yeah, what was that?
No closer than 19 to the stream and-
19.
18 from the lake, 17 more. That's what I deal with every day.
This is just my curiosity, though, maybe you want to get somebody to second that for us?
Do we have a second? Second, wanna wait on the vote till we hear your-
Is this property up there?
Wait for the vote.
That, part of that property that was filled in back 100 years ago or whatever?
Filled in that area.
With logs and stuff like that, so they could put a development in there for camps?
I would, I have no idea.
Okay.
It's all like a peat-based area, it's a low area to it.
A lot of logs were put in that whole wetland and-
Yeah.
Good luck.
And we're, we're 17.4 from the lake, is that what your motion was?
Yes.
Just keep that one? Tyler gets one.
All, all the uh that's it for me, for my motion.
Five feet from the side, 19 from the stream, 17.4 from the lake, 25% lot coverage.
Yeah.
Gavin, second?
Sure, I'm second now.
All right, all in favor?
Still got time for volleyball.
I was just thinking that, I'm like dying for volleyball.
Gotta go paint a catcher's, actually. Thank you.
Do we have uh Crystal LeKirk, LeKirk, 53 Miller Road, map 148, lot 004?
This one's more complicated, but-
No, it is not.
Hey, every one of those plans had your name on it tonight.
I know.
Uh, where are we going?
How do you spell your last name? I mean, how do you pronounce your name?
I was just gonna say, LeKirk.
LeClaire.
LeClaire?
Claire?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so steer to your own for the first time.
I've been pronouncing it wrong for six years.
This is for demoing existing building and rebuilding a 24 by 28 garage?
Right.
We put just some disinfectant wipes in case you want to clean after. Tyler. Um, even in the non-COVID era.
Yeah. This is what we thought was the property line at one time, and Joe's done the survey out there, and it's actually goes this way. So the dash lines is what was assumed to be the property line, the town map's picked it up as this as well too. Does that sound right? I'm still right?
Yeah, so I'm Joe Stanley with Line Pro Land Surveying, by the way, and yeah, without trying to make a, you know, reasonably complex survey situation, you know, um, you know, make your head spin here, but yeah, basically in a nutshell, the deed is worded one way, more like the black lines, there's been longstanding pipes and occupation lines that that went in a different direction that you could tell someone that previously used to build with, um, you know, so we have a kind of a survey situation here where the deed mentions a line one ways. Um, the survey monuments and pins have a lot a slightly different way, and it, you know, can get into some complex statutes as far as occupation and and some of you might have heard the term adverse possession, or even layman's term squatters rights before. We get into some of that situation, but um, uh, poor Chris here has been kind of listening to myself and attorney, um, tried to deal with this, tried to sort out his boundary lines, and I think at this point, he kind of got a little tired of the time and expense, so he just is kind of acquiesced to, hey, let's do the best practical on what we can prove by deed for the lot and um kind of move along and maybe deal with some of the the boundary issues later and then and in this scenario, if anything, it's more of a worst-case scenario for him, it's sliding things um, you know, kind of tightening things up on lot a bit, so that there is a picture of the existing structure on the property, um, you know, basically the lot's only about 45, 50 feet wide, so what I show there for a proposed greatest practical extent is basically moving it away from the road about six, six and a half feet, that existing structure, and then just um, you know, making it parallel with the property lines and splitting the difference. We, we don't have a situation there where we can even meet the 10-foot minimums for the side setbacks, but that's to us, kind of the best we can do relocating that existing structure, um, in in our opinion.
So you're lifting and relocating, or you're rebuilding?
The thing is-
Well, we're eventually looking at rebuilding, but it's, it's been my understanding with with the guidance um that we've received, that that generally the planning board's best practical location these days, we're looking at the existing structure and where that might be placed, and once we develop setbacks, we work with code enforcement on what the finished building will look like and the, you know, crunching all any volume numbers or lot coverage numbers that may, may apply.
So your new building could meet the side setbacks once you constructed it?
If we wanted to put something the size of a mobile home on it, you know, potentially, but again, my understanding of the greatest practical extent application is-
Do you know what the side setback is there?
Um, I don't, Ken, I don't know if I scale that, it's probably close to around four feet, that's what I thought, yeah.
So this is unique where a third of the building, a quarter of the building's actually not on the property, so I think sliding it over, getting five and a half feet, splitting the two difference between the side, that'll give them something usable, you're gonna achieve the 10 feet off the rear setback.
Correct.
Like we did a relocation on the house about five years ago or so.
And you own, you own both lots?
Yeah, it was an adjoining lot that first. Well, not adjourning, come to find out, but.
Let me go back to that map then, you just had. So, so you do own the lot now where the existing building is?
Correct. Uh, yes, as it stands currently, yes.
But I get confused.
So Dennis, he, he purchased the lakeside lot.
Yeah.
Oh, what was it, six, eight years ago, something in that one, maybe a little less? And then he just recently purchased the home beside him, uh, the property beside him with that other home on it, hope-
And then he just recently purchased the home beside him, uh, the property beside him with that other home on it, hoping to remove the home and, and build a garage.
Yeah, so this is the first lot he bought and then that was the second one. Originally, the prior people thought that survey or that property line was way up there.
Yeah. Sounds like something I'd do.
Yeah.
Wait, Joe.
I have more faith in you than that. You called me first.
As I would have. I've got no issues myself.
It's currently twenty by twenty-four. I say, you know, relocate, you relocate the existing structure no, no matter what it is, but if somebody's got a forty by sixty, to me, I don't look as hard to try to find him something as somebody with a twenty by twenty-four. They're four hundred and eighty square feet. And if he's putting a garage in and eliminating a potential dwelling unit, that seems to help as well.
Does the existing building have a septic with it?
It has a holding.
Yeah. And it has a well, I see, yeah. Beginning to use the old well with the new.
No water, no sewer, nothing. It's just, uh.
Accessory building, garage.
Wait, yo.
Well, it's outside the hundred foot line and. Looks pretty good. I mean.
I don't have any issues with it.
Does that lot become part of the house lot? Or is it kept as two separate? What happens?
So right now it's two separate, but most likely in this case, and I don't want to speak for him, but if, and right now it's, there's kind of a, there's a residence there. If he chooses to put an accessory structure like a garage, usually there's considerable tax benefit for him to combine them at that point if he has no intention for a second dwelling there. So usually what we see is people, it's his position, once they build the garage, they will combine them because it starts saving money and, um, you know, once they're combined, he's not allowed to recombi-, you know, resplit them, so we. We have that.
Is it that, Ken, is it, is it that if he builds a garage there, can he go back and make that a camp again or is that just a garage permanently?
If it was on a separate lot and it maintains separate lot, he would be able to put a dwelling unit in there in the future if he wanted to. I don't know if he'd be able to get a septic system on it. That would, he'd have to go through the state and a designer and things like that.
With my current home and where the septic and well, there's, there's no option whether I own that giant piece. There's no option to have another well and another septic that fits there anyways. So the only possible structure is a garage with storage and no livable space.
Have we made that a condition before, Ken, about joining the lot?
Nope, I don't think so.
No, we didn't do that up on Regate. Or at the end out there. It was something to do with the deeds and.
Hmm. They merged them together to get a buildable envelope.
Yes.
That's what they had to do.
Yeah.
I think they had three or four lots.
Yeah.
Three thousand feet of frontage on Great East and no place to build.
Right. Not that this is the same, I guess. I'm just talking like I usually do.
So the new structure would be thirty-five feet from the road, center line right away, five and a half from both sides. Is that five point five or five point nine?
Five point nine.
Five point nine, yep.
Are they both that or are they different numbers?
No, they're both the same.
Like centered, centered on the lot.
Is, was that including Eves' overhangs?
Correct. So any new leaves or overhangs couldn't extend past that number?
So you want a motion, Chris?
Sure.
I make a motion, we approve the best practical location for Chris LeClaire, uh, fifty-three Miller Road, Mattas, map one forty-eight lot.
Four.
Four?
Yeah.
Just lost my mind.
Lot four or five?
It's, uh.
Oh.
Four.
Says five on the page.
He owns both, so it got fuzzy. Four is the lot this is on, five is the one he is on. So lot four.
Lot four.
So we got to change that on our best practical location checklist.
Yeah.
It says five right now.
I changed it on the application, so.
Yeah, yeah.
For the setbacks.
Oops, let me catch you. Thirty-five feet, five inches from the center line right away. Five foot nine from the two sides and the rear will make its seven feet, uh, ten feet.
Eleven. Eleven.
Yeah, ten's all he needs there.
Anyone want a second?
I'll second that motion.
We get a, a vote on. Lot four. Middle Road map, uh, one forty-eight, Chris LeR. All in favor? All opposed?
Been struggling with this one for a long time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Ken, very much.
Got it.
God, we got some great news earlier. You saw a little video.
How old was he then?
Eleven. Yeah, we've been hiding it for three and a half years. We got to ring his bell today.
Congratulations.
Great. Great kid. Great young man.
Uh, Gothia Family Trust, forty-nine Livingston Goodwin Road, map one, one seven, lot fifty-three, best practical location. Are they here?
Our representative.
It's, it's good for the minutes to happen.
Hey, Jim Fiskus.
Oh, Jim, can you come up to the? Do you think?
That's just, um, disinfectant towels if you want to clean after Joe left.
I'm sorry, I'm already here and I can't.
Maybe you had to wipe yourself down.
But we'll work on that while we're talking.
What? Property owners are applying to demo the existing house to build a new home with an allowable thirty percent expansion allowance.
This is a Troy Monford one?
No, uh.
That's the last one.
Gothia.
Gothia.
I have an existing and a proposed.
I had to ask.
There's one with a full size plan from way back. I don't know whether you have that in the existing or not. It really goes the scope of the hill, but that one's okay too.
I've got your contour plan as well.
Yeah, the second one is the contour.
Yeah, there's actually three of them.
Yep, and the third one is the proposed.
Yep, there you go.
Yeah.
I think the thing you guys have to see is, that's the one I was actually looking at.
The second one.
That, that hill is tremendous. That, everything behind that house is actually forty-five degree grade.
You have a pointer right there too, if you need to do any.
Oh, very cool.
Jim's one of the few contract, contractors I can get that can do contracting, uh.
Yeah, but they can't operate a pointer too well though. There we go, okay. So anyway, uh, just to give you a rough idea, let's, let's just say that the lake is zero elevation. This area right behind the house is like ten feet high, okay? When you get up over into this area, we're into like thirty-five feet high. When we get up to where this telephone pole is right here, we're talking like fifty feet high. So this kind of gives you an idea. All these contours are two feet apart, uh, no, uh, two feet, you know, two foot high, okay? But if you scale all of that coming up this hill, that's actually, those, those contours are like two feet apart. So as you climb up the hill, you just get steeper and steeper and steeper. So anyway, as far as this house goes and as far as the site location goes, normally I'd just say, oh, okay, let's just push that house twenty feet back and we'll call it a day, you know? Well, that's a high tension line coming right through there and there, there's nothing that's going to move there. Um. And the only thing you can really do is to get that house like moved back thirty or forty feet and now I'm into the septic system that's already in there. Um. Then if we talk about building it into the hill, like with a walk-in basement, which is what it basically is, has now, um. The further you go into that hill, the higher you go. So it, it, it basically you end up with twelve foot retaining walls that you just can't build behind the house to keep everything. You could build a cave, you could build an underground home, but that's not really what these folks are after. So what I'm really saying, after we do the thirty percent, this house only gets a little bit bigger. It's only like, we can't count the basement only because it, it, it counts against us when we go and like put the, we're trying to get a new foundation under that place. So without counting the basement, that thirty percent only ends up being twenty-four by thirty. The house now is like twenty-four by twenty-two, I think, or twenty-one. Um, so we're just making the house a little bigger, but I'm basically saying that, you know, the best location for that house is right where it is. I don't really, there's no place that easily puts it somewhere else. Um. And I still say that building into the hill is, 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 uh, pretty tough to do because the hill doesn't stop. You know, normally you can build into a hill if it comes out into a plateau, so at least you have an area in the backyard. There will be no backyard. So I, I don't, you know, other than keeping it where it is, is, is about all I can really think of, so.
I've been out there. And to the point where I had to, um, I've been out there quite a bit off Parsons Point, but I had to ask Christina, uh, where this road was.
Well, if you know Parsons Point, you're, you're close enough.
No, I appreciate that.
This is all.
I didn't know.
You know, when I first saw it, it was kind of like, oh God, who'd, who'd want to build down here? But then you get down to where the house is and it's a nice protected cove with a little sandy beach and it's kind of like, well, that's why they built here.
Yeah, I, I know, I know the place.
It was one of those things, as soon as it snowed, we weren't getting, get back in there for pictures. Probably walked down in, but I don't think I'd be able to walk back out.
Yeah.
I kept it where it was.
And, uh, I agree with what Jim's saying.
And that's where we'd get into a little bit of the discussion as far as why it's not getting moved way up here. It's the power lines, the steepness of the slope, like you were asking earlier. I mean, there you can see it right there. And then those power lines come right through right around here. Those.
I think one of the things we have going for us is we're not building a McMansion here. This, this place is only going to be a little bit bigger than it is now and it, it'll be a heck of a lot cleaner, so.
I mean, all these places up through there, it just built out on these hogbacks. Off the side of. Okay, it's like Jim said, you can't move it.
Right.
We have some places right now around the lakes where the power lines are going over the roofs and that's a terrible thing. And so you don't want to move it for that and the other side is so steep that it's just not logical. Kind of like that sidewalk we did on, you know, where it is is where it is. Everything's so steep there, where are you going to move it to? You know, it just isn't logical.
Well, there's places to move it and it could be considered unreasonable. I mean, you've got all this back up here, but.
That's the, that's the slow part is the back part.
It gets a little flat up here, but you're talking three, four, five hundred feet away from the lake. To me, that's unreasonable. The location it's in, uh, like Jim was saying, it's twenty by twenty, a small camp. If you were actually trying to do a big, huge place, then move it back behind there anyways. It's, it's a couple hundred feet till you get up into that plateau area, probably up into here. A good two hundred feet before a flat.
Anyway, yeah, but it is surrounded by roads too, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's a little tough to figure out how you'd have access.
No, it seems reasonable, the location that it's at.
That's not a winter job though, I'll tell you that. Holy moly.
There's still cloud on that. Give them the winner.
I don't think that, I don't think they're considering winter.
Yeah.
They really don't. And we, we already told them we're, nothing we can do for them until.
Mrs. C always paid to have Parsons Point cloud.
That's all cloud.
It's still cloud.
But just the well driller alone is, is a harrowing thought.
Exactly.
Yeah, instead of going to Parsons Point, you take a left and then it's an immediate right.
Yeah, it's not a good time down there in the winter. Can we get a motion?
I think you meet all the setbacks except for the lake setback, right?
Yes, and I can't, I can't remember Ken off, I, I got it pretty well written there. I think it was at thirty feet.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Kind of between a rock and a hard place. You know, I might be able to move a foot, but then it makes me closer somewhere else, so.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the best practical location for Gothia Family Trust, forty-nine Livingston Goodwin Road. Map one seventeen, lot fifty-three. For the minimum setback, uh, from the lake of thirty-four feet.
Get a couple feet up.
I don't, I, I wouldn't want to put anything close to those power lines gap.
Yeah, the power lines are right there pretty tight.
That's.
Especially if a tree hits the power line, knocks the power line.
Go around the house, uh, right.
They're up there too. It's like twenty feet above the house, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're up there.
But they surely can reach a house without much problem in the right way.
Well, I said, you know, we can dig under it.
And I guess, uh, the do you want, as part of the motion? Ken, why we're not moving it?
The power lines are right there.
Power lines.
So we'll add that because that was part of the discussion. We'll just add that to, to the form. Yep.
So that's it, come in.
Any second. Can we have a?
Any discussion?
Discussion? Any discussion? I guess we'll take it to a vote and, uh, all in favor of Gothia Family Trust, forty-nine Livingston Goodwin Road, maps one seventeen, lot fifty-three. All in favor? Opposed? All set?
Yep.
All set?
Thank you, Jim.
Perfect.
Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Best practical location application. Property owner is applying to lift the existing home and set on full foundation.
Trying to winterize my camp because I was given the option at work to move here permanently, so, going to be a resident, hopefully, so. Yeah, I'm up in Bethel now, so.
I thought we gave that land to Shapley.
I know, you have to, the only way to get there is via Shapley, so.
Just kidding.
I'm just glad I didn't have the problems that that last guy had, Joe, when you came out where the camp was up on somebody else's property.
So he's looking to just jack it and put a foundation underneath it, no, no demo rebuild on this one. He's meeting a side setback here, he's got a little room over there and hopefully he'll plan to do an addition there someday. And that's his 10-foot side setback there. What's the waterfront? 33, 4?
Yeah.
Is, that is to the camp, so we'd be looking at the 22, 2?
16 foot.
16, it drops into that even closer, yeah. Guess that 16 would be coming from over here, popping to that.
So he's looking to just put a foundation under it?
Yeah.
On sonotubes now?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm just putting the basement in because of winterization, just so I can bring everything.
New septic be going up in the driveway behind it.
Oops. I just want to show where also in that picture where I had a retaining wall updated last fall because it was falling in and there was a lot of erosion there, so I put in, I talked to Ken and put in lawn there just to hold from erosion and whatnot, so.
Did all that when they dropped the light to fix it down?
Yeah, 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 and the guy was, it was cold last November and he was underneath a tarp with a heater doing it, yeah. It was luckily because at that point of the lake, it goes out about eight feet, so it was like a small window.
I personally have no issues with this one either.
Closest point would be that 16, 2 or 15, 2? 16, 2 off the deck, so keep it in the same location.
Exact same location.
I promise on the future ones, Ken, I'll make those numbers bigger, right?
Thank you.
My boy, that would be nice. Geez, Joe.
It's your fourth plan tonight.
It's gotten with these masks that my eyes get blurry even without my glasses on. So it isn't just like glasses that get blurry, my eyes do too now.
That's why I don't have them down, I just fog right up.
Well, it does look like there's about 10 feet, the camp could be moved back, you know, closer to the 50-foot setback from right away. There is a little bit of room there. The board was interested.
His hopes, he really, when he elevates it, he's going to raise that three feet. He's going to need some kind of a landing platform, stairs. There is this wooden walkway system there. He'll need something there, I don't know if he'll need this whole thing, depends which way he brings the stairs out. There's the road right there and the driveway comes there, so you can come right up and in over that area, but the whole lot generally is flat.
Now, I say, I know that area pretty good and I just wonder, by moving it really, Gavin, if you're going to do more damage than what you're going to gain out of it, you know what I mean?
I don't, I don't see what damage we'd do. I mean, the new foundation, they're going to dig up the area and we look to gain a few feet on each one of these because that's what we do with each one.
He'll need, he'll need at least...
If you guys don't think it's feasible, then...
I might just be getting soft in my old age, Gavin, I don't know. I might just be getting soft in my...
You got a target on you.
It's the mask, yeah.
It's the cabinet outside you've been breathing from for two hours.
If he moved it closer, would he lose his setback from the septic system? You know, he has to maintain that.
He's got the 20 feet and he's got to get a tank in there too. Probably you can, I'm more concerned about the egress out of the house, the little landing there and the set of stairs, whether they come out. He could turn one way or another, but he'd need at least half of that anyways for that. I don't know if I got a photo of that front.
I have an extra one right here, Ken. I got one for everybody.
On the street side?
Yeah, I took extra pictures because the ones that were on there...
We're not allowed to touch your paper.
You're not?
I'm just kidding.
Who knows these days?
I know, I may have a street picture, let me see if I got a street one.
How would you send the pictures to Ken over the, what do you follow, the internet?
The world wide...
World wide web.
The email. He's still using his WWW?
What have you done with it? Thank you, sir.
I think we can get a couple feet, but I mean, that's just, just how we try to do it.
I'm only wanting to get...
Share, I guess, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Does it look much different than mine?
It didn't have that one, can't hit it.
I'm afraid I'm going to notice that.
He'd know what to do with yours. He's going to turn his head off.
That's okay.
We'll put a mirror up there for you.
Let him know it works a lot.
What's your feelings about moving it?
I'd personally like to lift it and keep it where it is. It'll save me close to $10,000 by not moving it. I know that doesn't matter here, but I'd like, I'd like to retire at some point. That's kind of the plan is to retire here, so.
Be nice to keep the tree.
So.
You know, you kept it where it was, you keep the tree. Big tree in the front.
The one by the front door?
Yeah, I was glad they'd take that down anyway.
Because if you moved it, you'd be hitting the tree. You'd have to move, you have to take out that tree. Gavin?
Oh, they probably will anyway when they do the foundation. A lot of those trees are hazards at that point, once you dig up half the roots, so they usually take them down anyhow. We don't worry about that too much.
Did you?
I love trees.
I do too.
I hate trees, Dennis.
I love them.
You know me.
Dennis lives in the Resource Protection though.
I know.
I love trees.
I know. Would you like some mud?
Yeah, me too.
That's why it's much easier when they demo and put it into dumpster.
That's what he's been pushing.
Your contractor makes it out better though when he jack it.
I'll make a motion to, approve the best practical location for Troy Monford. 220 34th Street, tax map 153, lot 28. To raise a building, any existing footprint. Does that make sense?
No closer than...
I ain't got that, can't really see that.
16 something, wasn't it?
16, 2.
16, 2.
Yeah, 16, 2.
And it meets all the other setbacks.
All the other road setbacks, side setbacks, some, septic setbacks.
All second.
All in favor? Yeah?
Before you ask my German, I have something that I would like to say.
I got one thing I want to say.
Thank you.
Have a good day, thank you, guys.
Night, guys. Before I go?
Yeah.
All right, guys.
Oh, I don't know how we lost it. I think it's back.
That's right, that was the last one.
What are you looking for, Ken, picture of me?
Exactly. So just something to think as far as procedure, this is page 86 of our zoning ordinance, application procedure. This is for a conditional use. A person informed by the code enforcement officer that they're required for a conditional use. When we say you need a conditional use, they file the paperwork and come to you guys. Now, if they disagree with me, that's going to be one. Appeals process. Like over shot, 83. So if they disagree with what I say, then they go to the zoning board of appeals to hear a decision for, that's alleged that there's an error. So if they didn't agree with what I say, then that requirement decision determined, they go to the zoning board of appeals. And this just came up that we had an individual that's kind of doing a gravel pit, in my opinion, and I said, we sent him a letter, he needs a conditional use. They've pulled, I think, about 3,000 yards out now. And so he disagreed that he needed the conditional use, went to the selectmen, wants them to sign a letter of no action saying that there'll be no enforcement whatsoever. Kind of circumvent you guys, the whole process, the whole process is set up to take a lot of the decision-making, the politics from the selectmen, so they don't have to deal with any of this stuff too, so. It's kind of unique, I've never seen that done before, that the whole planning board got circumvented on that, or zoning board. So the processes are in place for, if there is an error on my part or somebody thinks there's an error, you go to the zoning board or a planning board, either way, so. Just something for you guys to think about.
I, I listened to that and this part of the ordinance, I think you're fine, is right out of the state statute. I think it's almost verbatim, the way this ordinance is. And I spent seven or eight years on the zoning board of appeals. Everything's very clear. If they don't, if people don't agree with what we do, you go to Superior Court. If Kenny denies or gives a permit and somebody doesn't agree with it, you go to the appeals board. And then if you don't agree with what the appeals board did, then you take it to Superior Court. If you read the whole thing, I was very surprised that the selectmen were even listening to it, because I've never seen my 50 years of even entertaining that. Pat Slutman just said, you've got to go to downstairs and go to the appeals board or the planning board or whatever.
That was two meetings ago, or...
Yeah.
Okay, I know what you're doing.
And that's just adding on to that a little bit, but something else that I would like to say, which probably Kenny would just sooner I didn't, is most of you know Kenny has given his resignation and to me, and history will tell you my opinion, this is a huge loss to the Tom of Acton. It's absolutely devastating. And this is nothing against who I knew in code enforcement officer will be. They got big shoes to fill, knowledge and stuff that...
They got my crocs, they're going to fill my crocs tonight.
Losing is unbelievable. And I do appreciate, last night at the Slutman's meeting, they said that Kenny would agree to stay on and as a deputy CEO for the transition for the planning board, there's a lot of new members on the planning board here, and Kenny's knowledge is, we can't operate without this knowledge. And like I said, I'm not the new person, obviously, people come, people go, but it's going to be a huge transition for us, especially with the recent happenings with the planning board. I went to the Slutman about a month ago, and the reason I'm talking about this because it has to do with the planning board. When the planning board was set up in town, was in 1963, and the statute, it was set up under, the planning board members are supposed to be appointed for five years. But it's staggering terms, so that every year, at reappointment, you appoint somebody and you still have four members that are like Gavin, that understands the history and the workings of things. They said they're going to research it, find out if I'm right or not, but it's a town meeting voted it in 1963 and I've seen nothing that changes that. So I think moving forward, there has to be some kind of, I don't know how to get there, but we need Kenny and we need, we're stuck with people like me, but this board isn't like the warrant finance committee, you know? I can sit there and I can debate an issue on the warrant finance committee and it's all based on somebody's opinion, you know what I mean? This board is governed by law. Everything that's in these books are the law.
And you're dealing with property rights and a butter's rights and hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars quite often too.
This is, this is the most complicated board by far, or committee or anything. You know, when I was a Slutman, all the, this is the most complicated board that I have ever been on in my life, because everything's a legal issue. And people need to understand, the planning board is like a jury, you know what I mean? You've got to make all your decisions on the facts. And I've said many times, and Gavin and I have made a little joke about me loving trees tonight, which I really do, but Gavin is more on the environmental side, you know, environmentalist, shall we say, and I'm more of a, I think you ought to be able to do what the heck you want to do on your property, it's nobody's damn business.
So it balances out good.
So it's a balance and believe it or not, I mean Gavin and I, we've had some heated discussions, but I respect Gavin's opinion and I believe he respects mine. We've got a problem in this town and the planning board is part of the problem. We have to find somewhere to get so that when somebody is having a gravel extraction place, I mean, the guy said he's putting in a crusher, he's going to be putting in the screed and he's, he removes several thousand yards of material. screed and he's, he removes several thousand yards of material. It's mineral extraction. It's kind of like what we're dealing with the fairgrounds.
And, and we should have a different level in the ordinance that's, it's, he's not a business where he's got scales and hours and operations like we had tonight, he just needs to remove a lot, an acre or so is open, right now it's, I thought it was about a 15-foot cut, the contractor told me it was about a 20-foot cut. But that's a lot of change for the three or four houses below him down on the lake, so.
But we need to go by what's in the book, Ken.
Yeah, and there's a lot of gray in the book though.
There always is.
But that's why the procedures are set up to go the way you go.
You have the discussion, like, like, like we, we did with Seth tonight. This is what you want to do, blah, blah, blah. You have, you have people that, oh, I'm not, I'm, I'm not using, putting in a gravel pit, uh, I'm, I'm just flattening out the house lot, you know? Hundred thousand yards later, uh, they're still leveling out the house lot. You know, that's mineral extraction and, and these are a lot of gray areas in these books like Ken said, and I just want everybody to be aware that we're gonna be real careful without Ken's advice on what we're doing. Because I sure as heck don't, even though I talk a lot, I.
They're talking, can you just add the, is that in the document?
It's in the.
That was in the zoning ordinance. I think 83-80 in that general.
It's laid out very clear.
And I was, I was a selectman for 11 years and we had a lot of major issues, dollar general sued our town because of the planning board and this and zoning board. I never got involved, I never, I never saw one document, I probably paid the legal bills for it, but, and that's what the system's set up for, is to take the pressure off of them. Because as selectman, you want to help everybody because they elected you and stuff, and it's real easy to get well involved. I mean, Jim was a selectman, I worked for him, he was, you, you were great as a selectman, you were, you know, we worked for you too, is it, and I've had a, had a lot of great boards that we.
One of the, one of the Slutman asked me, well, why do you have to have a planning board? You know, and I said, well, you, by state law, you don't have to.
And I can almost.
But the Slutman has to do the job.
I can almost agree with that, that here are the conditions, if you meet all these conditions, just drop us off a plan, you know, here's your 36 lots, go ahead, but then the abutters don't have any input either without a planning board. And the gravel pit tonight, I, you know, talking with them several, they just wanted to come in and start it operating, and I'm like, we gotta get the stuff in your name and let's make some transition and then, you know, are we gonna have a public hearing? Are we gonna do sidewalks? And I didn't think we'd end up doing that because there's snow on the ground and stuff now too, but, um, I'm sure that's a million dollar investment for the, for the kid.
That's a, that's a big.
So, at least get it all in your name, here's the conditions, and he changed three conditions too, for his benefit.
Yeah.
Well, maybe not the trucking in, on Saturdays in the summer, but he's not gonna do it anyways, so. But, no, I think I'll be around for a few months anyways, helping with the transition, get the new guy, get him trained up, go girl.
Go girl, that's a good point, Ken.
Good point.
Did you hear the dog's voice?
Yep.
Well, I would just like, I'm franking for all he's done for us.
Make a motion for a journey, he has to stop talking.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta stop.
It's like Jesus or a.
I gotta stop, sorry guys, I get to keep talking.
I think what you said needed to be said. You will be sorely missed.
Thank you.
About the whole time.
Is the budget timeline in the packet for that reason?
Um, ordinances, we're really not doing any ordinances because we've already got a handful left over from last year, we didn't get through, so the ordinance wouldn't be. Budget-wise, we had $20,000 last year set aside for the planners to come in and, and help you guys, look at that ordinance, deal with people like this on a daily basis, um, at least once a week, maybe have somebody in-house. Uh, so I'd be putting that back in, selectmen did say they'd be supporting it, so.
This year, yeah, well, we definitely need it, professional help.
Yeah, I mean, that, that ordinance was just a boilerplate Southern Maine Regional back in 1974 and it's just been a group of volunteers that, I like this, I like this, I like that, I like that. And it's, it's got a lot of gray areas that I should be cleaned up and it's got a lot of, um, contradictions in it and different layers that, yes, no, maybe, and, and then maybe get some state law changes brought up on that as well too, so it could use a lot of attention. Never mind subdivision regs, comprehensive plan.
Yo, and we have talked about that and that has to be done and that's a longer term effort, but I'm, I'm interested in what, when they say potential changes, we have the ones that weren't approved from last year, so those will be on the table. But what about the, uh, the use, the commercial zone issue, we listen to?
We really, you would want the professional planner's opinion on that as far as the multifamily, so multifamily is allowed, I'd have to look and see as far as the A. The problem, and of course you don't change an ordinance for one person, because you're gonna change it all over town. He's got no acreage and he's got no road frontage, so if you're gonna do a multifamily, you're gonna do it with, you know, you're gonna have four units with no additional road frontage or, or acreage, so that's gonna affect everywhere's too as well, that's just a, it's a bad lot for more expansion to it.
Well, he's not expanding and he's changing the use. Oh, that's what he wants to do.
Exactly.
Alfred does a lot of mixed use, I did talk to Alfred.
The mixed uses, yeah.
I did talk to him on a job site he came on, the code enforcement, and they changed the maps a lot for mixed use now because of the way things are going.
Yeah.
I forgot his name. He hangs out with the old guy, it's too old.
Well, the thing is too. Especially with our maps, I mean, we got recommendations and there was rationale for this and rationale for that. I think we really need to take a real hard look at, I've said this now for a couple of years, at our maps, just because of, when we did the commercial A or commercial B, it was really where existing businesses were. And we have businesses all over town, whether they should be there or not, uh, you can't right now, or you shouldn't be able to, and I just think a lot of that's gonna be addressed.
There's no downtown.
Exactly.
And I don't think you could really create one, you're not gonna create it on a 55 mile an hour road. So, there's really not a downtown district or an old mill district or anything like that, it's set up for a bedroom community or waterfront homes, is really what it's set up.
That's what we are.
Yeah. But you'll see development as it builds out on 109, a little here, a little there.
It's coming.
Yeah, it is.
Did you see through all the regulations on comp plans?
No, I, I ain't heard nothing about that, have you, Ken?
I've heard somebody else say something on comp plan was changed or something, but that's the basis of the whole ordinance.
I said that's the basis of everything we do is based off that.
Timelines to redo it or something, or. Last administration, I could see it, I couldn't see this one administration doing.
That's a lot of work, as you know, Jim.
Thank you.
It takes a lot of time and we get this information, a lot of it came today, and we tell them, we need it two weeks ahead of time and, and it gets piecemealed in and, and then we're, we're always concerned, we come up and turn this on, this was the first night we even got the, the projector, we had an IP address issue and stuff like that. To me, that just makes it so much, because we're all on the same page at the same time.
And we don't have to go do sidewalks for everything.
Yeah, that saves a lot.
This information is laid out, are you ready?
Oh, yeah, great. But you guys need to know that if Christina doesn't get her blue folders back, she won't give you nothing.
Or she, next year's budget.
Or she's gonna charge you for it.
Deposit.
She said I never gave back the blue folder, so the blue folder she needs back, she won't speak up and say that, but she, she did to me. Well, the budget doesn't, isn't big enough to give everybody new folders every two weeks. Maybe that's from the old board, I don't know, what the reward's gonna be. I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank God.
Hey, any of you guys could have done this.
All right, second, all in favor? Dennis opposed. He wants to talk a little longer.